Good evening, everyone. I would like to call our city council meeting for Wednesday, April the 10th, 2019, to order. At this time, for a moment of silence, I had an opportunity with the Mississippi Rivers and Towns Group to be in Minneapolis this past weekend, and hearing from about five other mayors, the challenges that are happening along the Mississippi River. Some of them are well over. They have forty feet height in some of the cities. Dykes are breaking, as an example. And the amount of support we receive because, in our case, we handle the flood, we embrace it, and it comes out of our banks, as opposed to pushing, putting a wall up and pushing it down river and making it worse for those downstream. But those people down river, and those people are struggling. So with that in mind, all of us that understand how lucky we are, but let's be mindful of those that are struggling either with snow right now up north of us and flooding south of us, let's keep them all in our thoughts. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and again, I wish you a good evening, and as we begin our meeting of our city council, I want to welcome all those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So thank you again for being here. Will an Alderman move approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March 27th? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Those minutes are approved. Do we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for April 3rd? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, that is approved. We're going to move on tonight. We have one presentation and one proclamation. We're going to start with our proclamation, and Alderman Dickman is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my honor to read this proclamation. It reads as follows: "Whereas the young people of Davenport are tomorrow's leaders, and whereas many young people need professional youth services to help them achieve their full potential, and whereas there are four Boys and Girls Club organizations in the Quad Cities that serve more than seven hundred young people annually, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club organization instills our youth with the self-confidence to believe they can succeed at anything they put their mind to, and stand at the forefront of the efforts in the area of academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club organizations in Iowa help to ensure young people have a safe, supportive place to spend time, and will provide them with quality youth development programs, and whereas the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Mississippi Valley will celebrate National Boys and Girls Clubs Week with over four thousand clubs and more than two million children and teens nationwide, and whereas Boys and Girls Club of the Mississippi will celebrate twenty-five years of serving this area in the summer of 2019. Now therefore, we, Frank Klipch, Mayor of the city, and the city council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 8th through 12th, 2019, as Boys and Girls Club Week, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, and religious and educational institutions to join me in recognizing and commending Boys and Girls Clubs in Iowa for providing the young people of our communities with comprehensive and effective youth development services dated this tenth day of April 2019. Move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Great, that's wonderful. And again, I think we're going to have, Rachel Price is one of the Boys and Girls Clubs' staff director of clubs and programming, Cindy Berg, Berg, yep, program, Board Vice President, Bill Garrett, Board Member, and Liz Zimmerman-Waldman, Member of the Staff and Director of Impact and Marketing. I think they're going to come up, and I'll present the proclamation.
On behalf of our seven hundred members, I'd really like to thank the city of Davenport for this proclamation. It is National Boys and Girls Club Week. We are essentially, it's like our homecoming week. We're just celebrating the amazingness of being a Boys and Girls Club. A couple of things we've done this week. On Monday, we had a ribbon cutting for a mural that is just done at our Moline Teen Center. We've had Pete the Purple Bull come talk to the kids about child safety and anti-bullying. Today was healthy lifestyle, so there was a lot of cook-offs, some planned work in a garden, but unfortunately, that got rained out. So tomorrow, we are focusing on careers and workforce. It's a big thing we do at the Boys and Girls Clubs. We will be doing different career activities for all of our kids, six through eighteen years old. And on Friday, will essentially be a big spirit day, so all the club kids are going to get together, and while they don't know it yet, our youth staff are going to be recognized and thanked by the members. So thank you very much. I know we have a couple of friends on city council, and we really appreciate the support.
I would say you have everybody on city council.
Well, yes. Personal friends, excuse me.
Only because, a couple of things. You know, with all the work we're doing with juveniles in the community and young people, you're a tremendous partner in all of that, and it's all about making a difference and giving kids hope and opportunity, and you do that so well. So again, let's all join together and give them a nice round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We also have the opportunity, and I'm honored to make a presentation this evening. You know, when I, back in 2016, when we started my term, my first term, we realized as a group that there's a lot of businesses in this community that aren't Deere and Alcoa and, or Arconic and Nestle Perina, but they're the ones that really work, provide most of the employment for most of the people in our community. To that end, I want to mention, recognize not only some good friends, but a great business and legacy business here in our community, and start by saying, in 1969, Jim and Marcia Kohler started WJ, I mean JW Kohler Electric with one employee, an old pickup truck, and the first job was installing an outlet for an electric dryer. We need, a lot of us need that help at home still, Jim, by the way. The job led to the contract with Sears Roebuck and Company, and for many other, many of the early years, Kohler Electric wired hundreds of air conditioners and appliances. Jim landed his first major project in late 1971, a large apartment complex in Bettendorf around that same time. They moved to the current location on West Central Park Avenue. By the early 1980s, Kohler Electric employed over a hundred employees, and those numbers could spike to nearly two hundred for short-term larger projects. Jim and Marcia's three children eventually joined the company. Son Tim was the first to come on full-time as an electrician in 1985. Daughters Robin, Robin Rollins and Leslie Wolf started full-time in 1990 and 1995 in the accounting department. In 2005, the Kohler Electric was presented with the family-owned Small Business of the Year Award by the Iowa SBA. In 2006, Jim and Marcia retired, and Jim, Robin, and Leslie formally began the second-generation transfer of ownership from their parents. Currently, there are four third-generation Kohlers working in the business, and two spouses of family members employed by the company as well. In 2014, Kohler was recognized by the Iowa OSHA as a VPP Star Contractor, the highest safety rating certification available. Kohler is still the only electrical contractor in the state of Iowa to maintain this certificate. In 2017, Kohler Electric came certified as a women-owned business. Currently, they are the only electrical contractor in the Quad City area to carry this certification. Jim was recently inducted in the Quad City JA Hall of Fame for his business ethics and support of the youth in our community. He was also appointed Emeritus by the Genesis Hospital Board for his longstanding service to Genesis Hospital from 1983 to 2018. Marcia still comes into the office most every day, while Jim enjoys staying active with Genesis, North Scott Rotary, his Davenport High School Men's Group, Old Cars, his church, and of course, his family. Tim currently serves as Governor of NECA, the National Electrical Contractors Association, a trustee with the IEBW, IBEW Pension and Annuity Board, Member of the Walcott City Council. He also holds positions on the Scott County Familywide, German-American Heritage Center, and the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. The Kohler family continues to remain active and engaged with community service as title sponsors of the Skip Along Daycare Charity Golf Outing, as well as the Kohler Electric Kids Race in the Quad City Criterion. You know, we want to thank Kohler Electric for fifty years of fantastic customer service, as well as your continued contribution to the economic growth, the hometown spark of Davenport, Iowa. Kohler Electric is another wonderful example of one of Davenport's local businesses that are truly the foundation of our community. So I think Tim wanted to get every Kohler Electric person here tonight, but, and most of them are here, I think. No, just kidding. And a lot of them couldn't come, so, but we want to invite all of you that are here to come on up as I make the presentation. And we realize the power goes out tonight, we're covered. And we have this brick really signifying the, symbolizing the foundation of our community. And you definitely are one of the foundations. Come on over, Jim, Marcia, come over, Marcia. It reads, "Local business. The foundation of our community, recognizing the unique businesses of Davenport, Iowa. Kohler Electric, April 2019." Congratulations. Want to, hold it right here, you can go. Everybody kind of cuddle in here a little bit, and we'll get some pictures.
Looks like I actually wrote everybody in the photos. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There you go. Somebody want to say a few words?
I will.
Great, great.
Mr. Mayor, I guess you can hear that. Mr. Mayor and councilmen and council ladies, thank you so very much for that honor. It is truly a privilege for us, as Kohler Electric, to work here in the city of Davenport. I was the city electrical commissioner here for thirty years, so I've been in and out of this building a lot of times, and I got to tell you, it was a privilege to work with all the fellows from the city here. And we have to wire the new unit out there on Forty-Sixth Street when that was built, and then to transfer out there and work with the fellows out there. And I'll tell you what, I'm a Davenport person, and I don't think there's a better place to be in the, there's not a better place. Davenport's a wonderful place to live, and you've guys made it so great. It's really a privilege and an honor for you to honor us tonight with this nice award. Thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Jim and Marcia, all the brothers and sisters and the other workers that are here. We can't thank you enough. Your continued support makes a big difference and is truly the foundation of our community. Thank you all, thank you. Next, we'll have petitions and communications from council members and myself. We're going to start with Alderman McGinnis, who's our Community Engagement Chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. So several things tonight. Sunday, April 14th, 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., there's the City Church Egg Hunt. It's at West Third Street between Harrison and Main. It's a family event, Easter egg hunt, balance houses, and games for kids. And then the Augustana Ritorio Society Spring Concerts, three o'clock, Sunday, April 14th, at St. Paul Lutheran Church on Brady Street. It'll be works by Bach and Farah. The society was founded in 1880, and it features Quad City community members, Augustana students, the Augustana Choir, the Augustana Symphony Orchestra, and invited soloists, two wonderful pieces that they'll be performing that day. There's also time to still visit two really beautiful Art Nouveau exhibits at the Figgy, and an added attraction, one sixty-two spectacular vases and stained glass windows and lamps created by the Tiffany Company. The other is amphora pottery, maybe less known, but it was created in what is now part of the Czech Republic, and they feature bizarre animals and beautiful women. And Thursdays are still free at the Figgy, and the special added feature is our currently enhanced river. There are great views from the Figgy windows of this, so good way to check it out, and it'll still be light at five o'clock on Thursday. Finally, just a reminder, this month's third ward meeting is Saturday, April 13th, at 10 a.m. At Cedar Memorial Christian Church, 306 Cedar Street. We'll be talking about summer safety with the Davenport Police Department, and everyone's certainly welcome to join us. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's an Easter egg scramble that usually happens each year on the Saturday around the East Village, and I've quickly talked to Ms. Spiegel and Alderman Clul, and because of the river and because of things, and I won't go into huge depth, but I'm just asking Ms. Spiegel if you could maybe, and I'll get you the contacts. It's just brought to my attention that they're having struggles, and they proposed a new route, but it would cause us to just be in Davenport now on some streets. So if you would be okay with having a meeting to talk and see if we can make this happen, I'd appreciate. I'll give you the details after. Thank you, Mr. Clul and Ms. Spiegel.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank a couple of employees for the work that they've done. I mean, sometimes I think, you know, you're out there and you look up here and you see these people on the dais, and you think they're doing all the work. Well, they're not. Last week, Alderman, Condon, and myself attended a neighborhood meeting out in the Lakehurst area, and a group of people that are very concerned about some erosion that was taking place in a drainage bed behind their homes. And Amy Kay and Billy Fisher coordinated this meeting, and, you know, I'm sure in job descriptions there's some verbiage about, you know, you may have to work after hours, you may have to get your feet dirty, but I don't imagine there's anything in there about dealing with disgruntled citizens. So I just want to recognize the professionalism of these two people in working with people. I know that Amy and Billy usually work with natural resources and not always people, but they did an outstanding job and made things a whole lot better for folks out in Lakehurst.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a great ward meeting last night at the Fairmont Library, and the library staff, as usual, did a fantastic job. Susan Knutson did a wonderful presentation on Erdy and some of the great programs this city helps people with their businesses or their homes to improve them, and, you know, make their neighborhoods stable and great. And the Kohler Company, the Kohler family here tonight, you know, they've been a longtime anchor of the Fourth Ward and Northwest Davenport. Just kind of a little fun note here that Northwest Davenport has the highest population of locally-owned small businesses in the state of Iowa, and as the mayor has given out these awards through the years, you know, quite a few of them, if not all of them, are in the Fourth Ward, so thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind everyone that I'm having a second ward meeting tomorrow. We'll be at the Fairmont Library at 6:00 p.m., and the topic is multi-systemic therapy, which as a reminder, is something that will hopefully be coming to the Quad Cities this summer, and is designed to address some of the systemic issues with juvenile crime, restorative justice, things of that nature. So definitely come check it out if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got three different announcements. So last year, the Q2030 Initiative started the QC Big Table, which is this idea that we would get thousands of people throughout the Quad Cities to sit down together in separate locations of groups of, you know, five to fifteen people and discuss how we could improve our community. So they revamped it a little bit this year, but I enjoyed my time. Last year, I think I met with nine other people downtown Davenport, and we just talked about how we could make Davenport better. I met new people. It was, I only knew one other person at the table, and we had some actionable items, so there was like three or four things that the city of Davenport could address that were brought up. Anyways, I enjoyed it so much. They've changed the format, but I decided this year I am going to host a big table here at City Hall on Saturday, April 27th. It will be right here in council chambers, and this time, they let the facilitator pick a topic. My topic is building better cities, so I'm hoping that there are people who have been to other cities and said, "I've been to this other city, I wish we had it in Davenport," or "I lived in a different city, and they did, they did a public works function a certain way, and I wish Davenport would do it that way," or "I have ideas on how the Quad Cities could be better." So twelve to fifteen people here on Saturday, the 27th. If you want to sign up, you can look for that link on Facebook. There will be donuts and more, donuts here, and coffee on me. That is the 27th, and if you want any information, just reach out to me. I'd love to, for you to be a part of that. And then secondly, I'm leaving tomorrow. I'm going to the APA, American Planners Association National Planning Conference in San Francisco to learn about how we build better cities. Very excited about that. And here's some of the topics. It's great when they finally send you the list of classes that you can go to and things that you can learn, but affordable housing, parking in downtowns, downtown revitalization, converting parking lots into places, central city housing, gentrification and the law, the missing middle housing, and the future of public spaces. And then I'll also be taking a tour of, San Francisco has a land bank that they've had there for a long time. That's a concept that we've discussed here in Davenport, but haven't gotten movement on that. But these are all things that are relevant to the city of Davenport, and we're out there seeing other cities doing things, and then trying to bring those ideas back and see how we can implement them in the city of Davenport. And the last thing, a little bit of levity, but everything is right in the world. I hope everyone saw that on Sunday at WrestleMania, Colby Lopez, aka Seth Rollins, brought home the WWE World Heavyweight Championship. He is a resident of Davenport, born and raised here. He's proud of it. He owns a couple of businesses in downtown Davenport. One of them is a training center for aspiring professional wrestlers, and the other is a coffee shop. So it's very cool that we have that, the WWE World Champion who's a Davenport resident, but to me, it's more cool that he claims the city of Davenport, and he's committed to reinvesting in our downtown area. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I just, before I follow up that, at the coffee shop, which is right at the corner of Scott and Third Street, he's been in there. I've had a chance to talk to him. I knew him when I was a kid, going to West High School and trained at the West Y facility, but he is, he's committed to Davenport, and thank you for bringing that up, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that we have our Kaiser-Schlotten delegation here over the next ten days, and this upcoming Saturday, there's a rededication of K-Square, Kaiser-Schlotten Square, down on Second Street. Everyone is welcome to attend. We'll be doing a flag raising. Staff will be covering some of the renovations that will be happening with the delegates that are there, and the city delegate will be giving a brief speech, but it should be a really good event. Please come down and share that time with our Kaiser-Schlotten sister city delegates. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor, for another opportunity. I just want Alderman Gripp to be extremely careful when he's in San Francisco and where he's walking. Now, as I heard your topics that you're going to be taking part in, I think the city of Davenport has done a phenomenal job in every one of those topics, so instead of going to San Francisco, the group should have came to Davenport, Iowa, to see how and what it takes to make America's a greater city.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. And there we go. We can promote the next conference here when you're there, Kyle. A couple of quick items. We have two juniors and, yeah, two juniors and three sophomores from Augustana who are here watching our meeting tonight. As you said, Alderman Ambrose, they're here to see how city governments work, and they're journalism students, and they're going to be asking some of us some questions afterward, so we're delighted to have you here.
Your Honor.
Yes.
They came to see how good government is working.
Of course, that's what I meant, of course. I just want to reiterate the Kaiser-Schlotten group. It's wonderful having them here. I had, as I mentioned before, I was in Minneapolis Monday and Tuesday, and a couple of things, the discussion, I met with the mayor, Jacob Frye, who's the mayor of Minneapolis, about land bank and land trust, and what they're using. So those are some techniques that they're using, and we might want to get into. We'll, you'll remember that later. But we had meetings, I was able to have meetings with General Mills and Cargill. By the way, Cargill is the world's largest family-owned private business in the world, which is kind of interesting. But both of them knew about, not only knew about Davenport, knew about the plant we had here in Buffalo, but also looked to us as the city that, how we do handle flooding and not push the problems down river. And they are looking at coming to do more possibly work in this area as well, so we're delighted to have that. I was delighted to have that opportunity. And again, you know, so many small businesses, again, we want to thank, of course, Kohlers, but all the great work that all of our business owners do, because they're the ones who, there's many more people working for small businesses when you add them up than there are any of our big plants, our big other operations, so we're delighted to have them here. So with that, seeing no one else, we're going to move on to an individual item on the consent agenda. It's for resolution for case number P19-01, request of Grunwald Land Development for a preliminary plat of West Lake Settlement on seventy-nine acres located in unincorporated Scott County southwest of Locust Street and Interstate 280 interchange containing forty-seven lots. The staff and the Plan and Zoning Commission have recommended denial, and the Scott County Board of Supervisors, which this isn't in the city of Davenport, it's in Scott County, have also voted negatively. have also voted negatively with this. So based on that, is there any from the public that wants to make a comment on this? Seeing no one, anybody on council? Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the consideration. Let's see, we're going to go down here first. Any discussion for any of you, first of all? Seeing none? Again, we're going to have a roll call, please.
Ambrose.
I'm sorry, what? Tom?
Well, I was just going to say, if I could clarify a little bit, P&amp;Z and staff recommend denial. If you'd like to deny it, you would vote no. So it's a little different than normal.
Thank you. I think my colleagues were on board, man. They understood the vote, so, but thank you for that clarification. It's always good to have the clarification. Roll call, Brian.
Ambrose. Condon.
No.
Rossen.
No.
Dickman.
No.
Tomkins.
No.
Gripp.
No.
McGinnis.
No.
Kuhl.
No.
Mattson.
No.
And Dunn.
No.
10 no's, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and that item, that resolution failed. Are there, as we move forward, let me go to the end of my list here, are there any, we'd like a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Brian.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tomkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
And Ambrose. 10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening? Seeing none, is there any public with business this evening? Yes, please identify yourself and your address and ward, please.
Hello, my name is Dennis Platt, and I'm in the sixth ward. I've come to both support your move to pass point number eight on your consent agenda regarding Go Davenport. I don't think it's perfect, but it's really good, and I'd like to see that go forward, and maybe even you'll find some refinements as you go along. My second issue has to do with the meeting yesterday with the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. I have a copy of a letter from the commission directed to the council asking for a public meeting to resolve differences that apparently have festered since last winter, last fall, this spring, and it's never been publicly dealt with, and it's time, because people are being neglected, and it really can't go on much longer. I'd like to see a public response to that letter, and I'd like to see a public discourse, and I'd like to see the public weigh in on resolving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Adam McWilliams, fifth ward. Just wanted to let you guys know that I have my regional track tournament this weekend, so if any Special Olympics athlete in Scott County gets a Blue Ribbon, they get to go up to Ames in May. And the other thing is, is we have a statewide Special Olympics fundraiser at Texas Road House, and if you come, you get a free meal, and then you can leave a suggested donation on the table, and it'll be collected up at the end of the day, and that's from 11 to 2 tomorrow at Texas Road House, and I'll, me and myself and some other athletes will be there, so just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one else, are there any reports, any other reports of city officials? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.